Okay.
Recording in progress.
Hereby called to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, May 22nd, 2023. Mr. C. Manager, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ratten.
Present.
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And Councilmember Schroeder indicated prior to the meeting that she would not be able to attend this evening. With us at the dais also by way of introductions, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's on my right at the end of the dais, and our city manager, Pat Trudgeon, who's on my left at the other end of the dais. We also have a number of staff department heads, commission members, and guests, honored guests, who will be participating through the course of the meeting this evening, and will make introductions at those times. This is a good time to remind people, if you have a cellphone, to be sure that it's silenced or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting. And then if, I don't think I, do we have anybody participating remotely?
We do not.
Okay, I'll forego those particular housekeeping announcements. With that, then, why ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, next on tonight's agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have any items from a staff perspective that need to be changed, Mr. Trudgeon?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Are there any council requested changes to the agenda or items that council members would like removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration this evening? All right. We'll do a quick check with members of the public. If you're here this evening to either make a comment or ask a question about an item in Section 10 of our agenda, which begins at the bottom of the first page and continues on to the second page, and is Items 10A through N this evening. Those items are normally taken up as a single motion without a lot of opportunity for input or discussion, and it's usually at the very end of the meeting. So if you're here tonight for one of those items, and you're here now, you can let us know, and we can actually take up that item earlier in the meeting so that you can make your comment or ask your question and then not have to stay to the end of the meeting. So I'll just check with folks in the audience, is there anyone here this evening to either comment or ask a question about an item in Section 10 of our agenda? Once again, Items 10A through N. All right, seeing no one then, it looks like we can have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved to second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Ratten, to approve tonight's agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That passes unanimously four to zero, and we have our agenda for this evening. Next up on the agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. We will have opportunities for members of the public to speak and ask questions as agenda items come up each meeting, but we do also, at the beginning of each meeting, provide an opportunity for general public comment. This is a chance for folks in the community to speak to items that either are related to city business, that's not on tonight's agenda, or items of interest to people in the community. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak this evening for public comment, general public comment? We've just asked that you come to the table then and state your name and street your address for the record, and then, once again, address comments or questions to the council, and we do have that three-minute time limit.
Okay, Roger Hess in Wagner Place. And after looking over your inclusion and respect statement and looking at other local ones, it seems like we're missing three important categories of discrimination: gender identity, home or first language, and physical appearance. And I would hope that sometime you may have a discussion about adding those to that statement. And then, when I went to the Juneteenth celebration last year, which was a wonderful event, I just, I don't know, it seemed kind of odd to me that I could find no mention anywhere there of all the hundreds of thousands of people who fought and died to end slavery. And I would think it would be nice to have something at the Juneteenth event, even just mention it somewhere. I don't know exactly how or what, but it just seems like it's, I mean, Juneteenth wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for these people. And they were, most of them were volunteers, and in Minnesota, half the eligible male population went there to fight. Even, even the members of the black community went to fight. A hundred black men went to fight there, and there were only 259 black people living in Minnesota at the time. So anyway, it would be nice if somehow, somewhere during the event, even there was a little tiny sign saying something, it would be nice. But anyway, you have a great week meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hess.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on general matters this evening at this time? All right. With that, then, we'll proceed with our agenda, and thank everyone for their participation up to this point. Next on our agenda, we have recognitions and donations, and we've got a couple of items this evening. The first is a proclamation, and that proclamation is related to Pride Month, and I'll read the proclamation, and then a motion to approve would be in order from the council. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the city of Roseville supports the LGBTQIA+ community and honors their many contributions to the health of the city, and remains committed to treating all people with fairness and respect; and whereas in 1993 Minnesota became the first state in the nation to outlaw both sexual orientation and gender discrimination in the field of employment, housing, and public accommodations; and whereas in 2013 the state of Minnesota legalized same-sex marriage; and whereas in 2021 the city of Roseville became the ninth municipality in Minnesota to ban the practice of conversion therapy on LGBTQIA+ youth and vulnerable adults, a practice now banned also by the state of Minnesota as of 2023; and whereas Roseville continues the tradition for communities across America to recognize their LGBTQIA+, which is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, and ally residents, during the month of June, and recognizes the plus symbol to symbolize the inclusion of all identities; and whereas LGBTQIA+ people, as the rainbow flags symbolizes, come from every group, religion, ethnicity, age, occupation, ability or disability, shape, and size; and whereas members of the Roseville LGBTQIA+ community have always served as valuable people in our, valuable people in our country in every capacity, as homeowners, taxpayers, members of the military, business owners, parents, and employees; and whereas it is important to recognize that we are all part of the same community, and whereas LGBTQIA+ residents have enriched the diverse community of Roseville through their participation in city government, the arts, religious, and civil institutions, education, and community organizations; and whereas the city of Roseville believes that all people deserve to be protected from bullying, harassment, discrimination, and health disparities, and convey a clear message that intolerance is not welcome in our community; and whereas LGBTQIA+ community allies, including the Roseville area high school student groups, provide support and encouragement to Roseville youth with the assistance of school district staff and administration; and whereas the city of Roseville reaffirms our commitment to promoting full inclusion and equality for every resident in our great city, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Roseville hereby declares June 2023 to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Roseville.
So moved to second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Ratten, to approve that LGBTQIA+ Pride Month proclamation. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Graff?
A bit of discussion. I just want to point out that the, the T that stands for transgender in the proclamation is extremely important this year, considering all the bullying that is happening to that group of people. As we've made progress in some groups of people that are represented here, that one is suffering extreme legislation and things to outlaw their, their existence. So I'm just speaking up on their behalf.
Thank you, Councilmember Graff. Is there any other discussion on the proclamation? Councilmember Strong?
I just wanted to add that often, one of the As as well is, includes asexual, so as all the other items or identities were listed, I want to make sure that that was acknowledged as well.
All right, thank you. If there's no other discussion, then all in favor of approving the proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously four to zero, and that proclamation is approved. With that, we have one of our most pleasant highlights of the year, which is the announcement of winners in the Human Rights Inclusion Engagement Commission's Essay and Art Contest. And this year, we have a winner with us this evening who is going to present their winning entry, and we welcome you, and we'll turn it over to a member of the HRIAC Commission. Have a seat, feel free, and make introductions and provide whatever background you'd like to provide as well.
I'm very sure. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to introduce Megan Seeger, who was the entry, the only entry, actually, this year for the Essay and Art Contest. We loved her, what she wrote, and I saw her earlier tonight and told her how much I loved her submission, and I think you will like it, too. So Megan, I'm going to let you take it away.
This is called "In a Perfect World." Birds chirp and the grass hums, the sky sings and the water runs. No cars, no wars, no politics, just happiness, life, and enjoyment. All is calm and all is right, the sun shines and the stars twinkle at night. The trees grow and the animals thrive, everyone and everything in perfect harmony. No racism, no hate, no anti-human committee. There's enough love for everyone, no one without a home or food, and no people are lesser, illegal, or wrong. The world could be this way if we could just decide to all get along.
Thank you. Great job. Round of applause. And thank you for being willing to come here this evening and read it. It makes so much of a difference to people to hear it from your own mouth, and so we appreciate that very much. And I was debating whether to say this or not, but certainly, the committee didn't have to award just because there was one entry, but I think it goes without saying that your entry was so good that it deserved the award. So we really do appreciate your efforts this evening and look forward to what you can do, continue to do in the community, to help further those goals and aims that you've laid out in your poem. Thank you again. Congratulations. And I think we've got, oh, that's right, we've got a certificate here, so.
Yeah, work to do.
I'll come around in front, and we can.
Job's not done. Sweet, Rachel, we may die under the desk. Yeah. Just a moment.
We got, we're good. We're good.
Thank you.
We're good.
And I should say, you can feel free to stay for the rest of the meeting, but nobody's going to make you.
Baseball.
You've got your priorities in the right place to get to that baseball tonight. I never want to get between people and their baseball. All right. With that, once again, congratulations to Megan, and that brings us then to our business items this evening. We've got a couple of items, and the first is to receive our all-departmental equity update, and I believe Thomas Brooks, our Equity and Inclusion Manager, is with us this evening remotely, and will introduce this item, and then we'll hear the updates from the various departments. So if Mr.
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Thomas, if you're ready to go.
I'm ready. And you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Well, good evening. We have done this before, so I'll be short with the opening for the presentation. This is, you know, May is always a good reminder of why we need to continue our commitment to equity and inclusion across the city. You know, May symbolizes the murder of George Floyd and really the progress of equity and inclusion work across the Twin Cities, the state, and the nation. And so for me, when it comes to equity work, I know we have our SRE, which is, you know, something that, as an organization, we're continuing to push forward, but even more so, it's important that all of our departments and everything that they do really put equity first. And so that is what this presentation symbolizes today. I will actually go ahead and turn it over to, I believe, police are up first, I'll turn it over to Erica.
Welcome, Chief Scheider.
Good evening. So I'm going to cover a couple different slides for the police department. I'm not planning to read everything on all the slides and all the bullets, but certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have. We know that past policing has led to a divide, especially with communities of color. It's led to mistrust and really undermined the legitimacy of law enforcement. So this is something that's been really important to the police department, especially starting back in 2015, when President Obama's report on policing came out and recommendations came out. And this was a central focus, building trust in the community. And so there's a lot of work that we've done. We still have a lot of work that we still need to do, but I'll just highlight a couple things. On this first slide, probably one of the things that we're most proud of is what we've done around mental health. This last year, we've been able to bring in, we've got three social workers now, and we've really found that sometimes the police aren't the best people to be responding to these calls, or to have, it's more important to have a social worker coming along beside us. So we now have two Ramsey County embedded social workers. We're working towards getting to a co-response model with those two social workers, and then we're now really excited to have People's Inc. also onboard, and they're doing a lot of that case management so people don't fall through the cracks. In addition, there's a lot of work at Ramsey County that is being done on alternative response. So when somebody calls 911, the dispatcher may recognize, hey, this might not be a police call, really building that foundation to send another community provider out to those calls versus sending police when it's appropriate. So that work is being done, that foundation is being built, but I think it really speaks to the equity work that we're trying to do to build that trust and legitimacy in our Next slide has some of the events that we've hosted in the last year. I'll just touch upon a couple of them. We hosted a gun turning event. We had 34 guns that were turned in and over 1,000 rounds of ammo. We'll never know if, you know, those guns would have ended up in the wrong hands, but what we, what we did learn is there was people in our community that realized we got too many guns, or we've got guns that we don't really want, we don't feel safe having them in our home. And so being able to have that event really made an impact in our community. In addition, we've got free gun locks that are available anytime at the police department, so people can stop in anytime. We obviously really are advocating for safe gun storage and making sure that people are responsible. Another event that I was really excited about this last year is we did an art project with the Roseville Area Middle School. This was a project where we teamed up with some of the students, and the focus of the art was inclusion and equity in community. So the picture that's on the screen is actually one of the projects done by a group of students, and that art now hangs in my office. In addition, we've put them up throughout the police department. So just a great project to come together and work with our students. So next slide, I'll talk just a little bit about our traffic enforcement policy. This changed actually back in 2021. It's been in practice way before that, but in 2021, we really made it an actual policy. It's in our policy manual that we don't want our officers enforcing minor equipment violations that don't create a public safety risk. This is like for a minor brake light that, or a crack in a brake light, or a license plate light out. So absent other factors, our officers do not enforce that. This is something that was done in Ramsey County, St. Paul, and Roseville, where the two agencies had initially signed on. Really excited to build on that. In the beginning of this year, we started doing warning letters, and that allows an officer, when they're out on patrol, if they see one of these really minor equipment violations, we were able to build a program where they can quickly enter it, it pulls in their GPS locations, there's not a lot of time. It literally is a license plate and a drop down on what you observed, and then our record staff is able to mail out a warning citation to that person. It's not really a warning citation, it's more of an FYI. You have a license plate light out or a headlight. What we found is a lot of times, people don't realize that they had an equipment violation. To date, and again, we just started this in January, we've mailed out over 1,500 letters, and we've had over 50 people come in asking for Lights On voucher. We do offer that, as well as we have a diversion program that we're partnering with that helps with expired tabs, and we've had a handful of people follow up on that. Super excited that on June 7th, we're going to be doing a community conversation, and we'll be looking at the research, and we're partnering with the St. Paul Police Department and the County Attorney's Office to really talk about what we've learned this last two years in doing this kind of pilot program in Ramsey County. So more to come on that, the details are still being worked out, but we do hope to have a community conversation in partnership with the county attorney here coming up. So stay tuned to our Facebook page on that event. And then the last thing I'll just touch upon is staffing. You know, it remains a priority for us to diversify our department and reflect the community we serve. We know that that helps build trust and legitimacy. This work really started back in 2019, when the council approved our commitment to diversity, and that was really focusing on hiring non-traditional candidates for community service officers, for interns. Recruiting and retention has become harder than ever, and this work remains really important and something we're going to continue to focus on. A few things to highlight, in 2023, we added a second cadet position. The difference with our cadet positions versus CSOs is that they get benefits. We found for a lot of non-traditional candidates, they just couldn't afford to work two part-time or three-part-time jobs with no benefits, so this is another way to bring non-traditional candidates into our department. We're also, we just received another Pathways to Policing grant that I think you saw on the consent agenda a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't, forgot to mention on the slides, even though we didn't have, our explorers program went on pause for a couple of years, really excited that we were able to start that up. We have nine students, over half of those are persons of color, and four out of the nine are females. So really excited to have the explorers starting up, it's just another way to diversify our department. Again, we have a lot of work left to be done, but one, I guess, promising note for me is since January of 2022, 58% of our CSOs, cadets, and officers, and 80% of our interns are non-traditional or underrepresented in law enforcement. So again, a lot of work still to be done, but I think we're headed in the right direction. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to whoever's next.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before I get into the nitty-gritty, I just will preface, similar to Chief Scheider, that, you know, over the last five to seven years, our industry as well, although less publicly, has really experienced somewhat of a reckoning of the role we play in equity, and to a point where the National Recreation and Parks Association has said that equity is at the centerpiece of its new mission, and that's recognition of the place that we have. We're in this camp where inherently what we do is making people's lives better with more health and wellness, environmental benefits, and if we were only serving a part of the population, the recognition that we're actually creating greater in equity by doing that. So we've got a few things to share, like Chief Scheider, I'm not going to read every item on my slides, but to highlight that we've got some things that are really, really big, and some things that are a little smaller, and they show kind of how we're thinking about this throughout everything we do. So as a council, you're, of course, aware of the work we did regarding Kaia Park and the renaming of Pocahontas Park, and I won't go into great detail on that, other than to say that's progressing nicely with some temporary signage going up in the coming weeks, and the final transition happening this fall. One thing I do want to highlight that we haven't talked to the council too much about is we entered into an agreement with a group called Reach for Resources, and that's a group that provides inclusion services to parks and recreation agencies in the Twin Cities metro area. And what that is, is when somebody signs up for one of our programs and needs some sort of assistance, inclusion service of some sort, they provide, they send out a trained professional to come and be a part of our class. That professional meets with our instructor beforehand, and they get to participate in the class with a trained professional, as opposed to beforehand, you know, it might be a seasonal employee who was really doing the best they could, but they probably weren't getting that level of service that we'd like to provide. Additionally, Reach for Resources now does provide training to all of our seasonal staff, so when we onboard our seasonals here in a couple of weeks, they'll be part of that training program as well. So we're a little better prepared when we have somebody with special needs in our program. Of course, we continue to host a number of events that highlight the various cultural diversity here in Roseville, from our Creative Crossroad Events to our Wild Rice Festival, and our staff is really redoubling their efforts to make sure that we're interacting with the impacted groups and ensuring that these events are done respectfully and with those groups involved in the planning. One staff member I want to specifically compliment for this is our new Nature Center supervisor, Dion Hader, who has already made some connections in the Native American community related to the Wild Rice Festival. We also did host, with Matt Dumba and the Minnesota Wild, the Hockey Without Limits Camp, and I just highlight this because it was a lot of fun. He had teams made up primarily individuals of color. There was one specific team that was all Native American players that were there, but additionally, this year, they added sled hockey and vision impaired hockey into that one-day event as well. So it was a really, really fun day, fun event to be out there for, and again, a great way we can serve historically underrepresented populations in the world of hockey. Lot of stuff on this slide, the one I do want to highlight is if you attended the Central Park Victoria Inclusive Playground opening a few years ago, there was an individual there named Zolt Vincennes, and he spoke very powerfully. Following that event, Zolt and myself and some of our other staff built a relationship, and we meet with Zolt, I'd say quarterly, but additionally, Zolt and his friend Maria have made a point to be involved in every playground planning process we've done since then. So if you see that picture in the top, that's Zolt and Maria out at, let's see, that was Pioneer Park, involved in that playground engagement meeting, and I'll tell you, having their eyes on it, sometimes the smallest tweaks makes the biggest difference. It's not necessarily, again, the big things, it's having them involved in the process has been really powerful. And of course, we do have our commitment to, as we do construction projects, making sure that we're really trying to move our inclusion, our inclusivity further. So on the right side, you can see our new heated state-of-the-art access ramp at the skating center that will be fully accessible even in the winter. And on the left, we are just finishing up our newly paved, in both combination of concrete and asphalt, pathways at the Muriel Selene Arboretum, and I have to state, that was paid for by our friends at the Roseville Central Park Foundation, and we received a ton of unsolicited, really positive feedback about that. I think it's really opened the arboretum up to a whole new group of people who were not able to be there previously. And then we've got a few other things that we've been working on, and the one that I'm going to highlight is, I think, again, facially pretty small, but hopefully gets to a shift in thinking, and that's that second bullet point, where we were reached out to by a resident a couple of years ago about making sure that our books that we are including in our summer programs actually represented Roseville as a whole, and not just the traditional what have historically been thought of as the classics. So for the last couple of years, we've added different books that are on this list of educators by, educators of color books, and made sure that we're representing different populations in our learning materials that are in our summer camps and summer programs. And so again, a thing that facially is a little lift, but to be perfectly honest, I'm not sure eight years, 10 years ago, we would have even thought to have happened. Of course, we're continuing our work on the scholarship program. We did collect data on that for the first time last year and found that over 50% of the individuals who participate in our fee-assistant programs are individuals of color, which leads us to believe that can be a great tool for improving diversity within our programs. And we did increase the total coverage to $150 per person from 100 last year to try to make that impact even greater. And again, another one that seems like low-hanging fruit is we did have a number of single-stall, at the time, men's and women's rooms in our park system that we've now converted to gender-neutral single-stall restrooms. And so again, as I think Mr. Brooks said properly, it's progress, it's an ongoing path forward we're trying to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you, Parks and Recreation Director, Matt Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So talking about Public Works, we didn't have anything, I think, last year.
Who are you?
Oh, Jesse Frym, Public Works Director. So last year, I don't think we had any updates, so I'm very proud, we do have some things that we've been trying to accomplish. So one of the biggest things I'm proud of is our snowfall parking pilot program that we did. We tried this program out in three areas where traditionally with our, our snowfall policy, we, we don't allow parking on streets, but that can become very problematic in areas with apartments. So this was actually initiated by our maintenance staff, saw as a way we could potentially do this, they actually did a pre-pilot the previous year at work. So we did this in three areas, but basically it allows parking on one side of the street, allows us still to plow the roads, and then does give some parking where they don't. But the overall goal was to reduce tickets and then still improve the streets, but since a lot of residents, this, this, their only place they can park, this really benefits them by not getting a ticket or potentially towed. So we do look to expand that potentially next year as we get more data. It's, like I said, was a pilot, we'll be looking to tweak that language potentially in the future. The, some of the larger snowfalls, it wasn't perfect, but it certainly was an improvement. A few other projects, some of the parks and recreation, anytime we do a construction project, we're looking to bring it up to ADA standards. So last year was actually a light year, we only upgraded four curb ramps, but that's something we are very proactive as we, as we go through. Anytime we touch a road, if there's a curb ramp that's out of compliance, we bring it up to speed. And then from the recycling end, we are trying to reach out to a lot of non-English speakers. And then from the recycling end, we are trying to reach out to a lot of non-English speakers so they can understand kind of how our recycling works. So we are looking at translating stuff to, and updating signage and educational material in various languages. From the sustainability side, kind of similar, we're reaching out to different languages to get people to understand the different programs that we have, so they can sign up. Certainly, if we only send out in English, they don't really realize what we can provide or how we can help. We also modified the Sustainability Stewart Award to make that more accessible to renters and small business owners, so reaching out to populations that previously couldn't get that. And then working with community development on the, getting to install chargers at the Edison Project, which is a multifamily housing, and then participating in bike events to help promote transportation. So we're always looking to expand access for pedestrians and bikers, for people who don't have access to vehicles. I think that was my last slide, so I will turn it over to Janice.
Thank you, Mr. Frey.
Good evening, Council, Janice Gunlock, Community Development Director. I just have a few slides here. This past fall, we concluded the engagement effort related to the new tenant notification ordinance. We engaged with a little over 100 families, and we believe that at least 50% of those families were BIPOC. The council did adopt that ordinance in October of last year, and while a couple of apartment buildings did sell just before the ordinance went into effect, we haven't had any sell since the ordinance passed in October, but we have been working with the fire department to update our licensing applications to make sure that there's awareness of the ordinance, so we are catching those when they happen. The engagement effort for that project, we actually went out to apartment buildings and met with people where they were, and it, while we wished we would have engaged with more than 104 families, I will say that every individual engagement effort was meaningful. So we did learn a lot from that process. This past summer, we also joined Just Deeds, and that's something we had been talking about for quite a while, but we were waiting for Ramsey County, the Ramsey County map to be released by Mapping Prejudice. That map was released in July. Interestingly enough, the map was updated in January, and the number of properties in Roseville nearly doubled. So we went from 200 approximately to over 400. Most of the areas that were added were near areas that already had covenants with the first map release, except for the area around McCarran's Lake, specifically the south side of McCarran's Lake, a lot of properties were added to the map. So we have updated our website, we've updated the map that's available, and you will note that on our webpage, we've provided a link for residents who want to take advantage of the service from Just Deeds to discharge those racially restrictive covenants. We've gotten about a dozen requests so far, although I think one of those is a Falcon Heights property. Moving on, over the last year, we've really broadened a lot of the housing programs that are being offered, and we've been looking at that with the equity lens at the forefront. One of the programs is our First Generation Down Payment Assistance Program. We've closed three of those loans so far, and I want to thank the EDA Council for expanding the funding for that program, because we will be able to continue to offer that program. I also want to note Ramsey County has a very, very nice program that could be used as well, so we're going to work on promoting that a little bit more. On the business side of things, we did create a small business assistance loan a couple of years ago. That is technically a lender of last resort at a $50,000 loan that we partner with Open to Business. We haven't closed any loans to date, but we've learned a little bit through the promotion of that program and the Choose Roseville program that a smaller, more forgivable microloan is something that our small businesses could benefit from. So the EDA did just pass that last meeting. So again, I want to thank all of you for recognizing the need for that type of program. And our belief that that program would be valuable really came out of the Choose Roseville program, which just concluded at the end of last year. And that's something we rolled out in a post-COVID world, trying to help our businesses recover from the pandemic. This particular effort resulted in 187 unique businesses receiving some sort of assistance through the Choose Roseville program, and over 50 of those were BIPOC-owned. And while we visited and engaged with 187 businesses, we provided real assistance in the form of social media help, job posting, website assistance, and video creation to 35 businesses, and a majority of those were BIPOC-owned businesses. I also want to highlight the Rice and Larpenter Alliance. This is an effort that we collaborate with St. Paul, Maplewood, and Ramsey County. It assists our most ethically diverse neighborhood in Roseville in the southeast area. We have council and staff representation on the board. The EDA provides financial support of $40,000 annually. We also serve as the fiscal agent, so we pay all the bills for the alliance. We also promote five community events, and so if you haven't attended one of these events, it's a really great opportunity to visit with the neighborhood. This group has also been influential in getting the G Line available through this corridor, and so that'll be coming out next year, I believe it'll be rolling out. There's also a lot of direct outreach to businesses in the Rice and Larpenter area, and a lot of those are BIPOC-owned. And through this alliance, microgrants are also available to some businesses for facade improvements, and then there's some other minor beautification efforts, including a cleanup event. And then my last slide is housing. I really wanted to put housing last because an individual's success really relies on them having access to good housing, and the Minneapolis-St. Paul area has the largest black-white gap in homeownership. And so with the last comp plan update, there really was a focus on trying to secure more missing middle housing types, and that's the housing type that is between a single family and an apartment home. We are starting to see more of those units be of interest to people, although it's still less than 10% of all of the housing units that we've created over the last four years. So there's still a lot of work to be done in that area. We've also decreased our minimum lot size requirement for single-family, which makes the product a little bit more affordable, although unfortunately, in Roseville, still not fully affordable to some families. And then lastly, the city council through the EDA has really put their money where their mouth is in terms of public finance assistance in support of affordable housing. So we have our land trust partnership with Habitat for Humanity. They have 13 homes in process. We've officially closed on one with a family moved in. A lot of those homes, though, are still getting the lead-in asbestos abatement taken care of before families can move in. And there's a map on the bottom right-hand corner of this page, and you'll see that those homes are spread out throughout the community, so they're not concentrated in any one neighborhood. And since the last time we presented to you, two additional affordable housing projects have completed and have opened up for leasing. The one is the 277 units of senior affordable housing over at the Harbor, and the 60 units of family affordable housing, which Jesse mentioned earlier, is getting EV charging stations. So that, I believe, is my last slide.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is David Brosnahan, I am the Fire Chief. Thank you for the opportunity to be here in front of you tonight to discuss this important topic. I've been told I only have a couple of minutes, I'll do my best, I can't promise anything upfront, though. I do want to give a quick kudos to Mr. Thomas Brooks, he's been a great asset for the department, but also for me. I've asked for some different help and assistance with different programs that we've done, so he's doing fantastic work. So for the fire department, some items I'll talk about tonight will be new, and some might be a little bit of a repeat, but it's a repeat because it's something that's important to us that we want to try and work to maintain. So starting off here, the transition to ALS First Response is truly providing a higher level of EMS care in the community for everyone in Roseville. This program's closed a widening gap of advanced care, and those in the highest need are not waiting longer for important medication or treatment, and they're getting in the matter of minutes from their fire department. We've started some early partnerships and collaboration with the community action team, with the police department, to assist with providing medical care and assistance to those that are homeless or unsheltered. Those in this life situation likely have limited healthcare access, so if we can help bridge that gap even just a little bit, it's hopefully beneficial. We're able to perform an assessment, check vital signs, check blood sugar, give, you know, feedback on anything that's going on, and that's the care that we can provide. Health outreach continues to be a priority for us. We're getting a lot of these activities that you see with the four items that I listed here, but a goal moving forward is actually taking these activities more on the road. We do a great job of facilitating and hosting some of these events at the fire station, but we want to do better with some of our community and health outreach with actually meeting people where they're at in the community and doing a better job of accessing those needs and performing that as well. Not a ton to report on multifamily, just want to make sure that it is a placeholder because it is of high importance for us. Maintaining compliance and ensuring our multifamily buildings are safe, secure, and sanitary is a significant project, a big undertaking. Thus far, in 2023, our multifamily buildings are doing well through the inspection and licensing process, and simply with 35% of our population is renter-occupied housing, when a significant number of our population are in medium or high-density living, it's important to maintain that high-quality program, which I think we take very seriously, and I know that you do as well. With our recruitment efforts, we hired our first fire cadet in early 2022 and our second one in late 2022. As you're all aware, a fire cadet position is our opportunity to reach out and find that non-traditional person and bring them into the fire service. We've had recruitment concerns over the years, seeing open firefighter application processes that render 90% male and 92% white applicants, and so something needed to be done. One item I'd like to work on developing into the future is a piggyback on our police department and what Chief Scheider mentioned earlier, I'd like to create a Commitment to Diversity firefighter position. Whether it's from outside the organization or an existing fire cadet, I'd hate to lose a quality employee or candidate because I didn't have a spot for them. Allowing the fire department to go above authorized numbers to make a good hire that better reflects the community we serve is important to me. The other item we have up here is our Fire Explorer program. The Fire Explorers are excelling after being very dormant during COVID, which is an unfortunate time period to have a program like this. We currently have 12 young adults that are part of the program, they're doing fantastic. I'm going to let you in on a little secret, it's not about firefighting necessarily. These kids do a great job, kids, they're young adults, do a great job, and we're not trying to create the next super firefighter. The point behind it is the three things that you see at the bottom. It's mentorship, it's skill development, it's confidence development. So the big piece here is, you know, for kids that are 12 to 15 years of age, mentorship is either typically in the house or in school, and this opportunity gives them somebody else to have a mentor with and to develop that type of relationship, which is important. Skill development isn't necessarily firefighting skills, it is all about team building, it's interpersonal communication, it's followership, it's leadership, those types of things. And with confidence development, it's a you-can-do-this mentality. I think about myself when I was 12 or 13 years old, if I was put in a search-and-rescue maze, and I was put on a SCBA mask with it blacked out, and I had to work my way through a maze, and I would probably be scared you-know-what-less. And so the interesting thing with these kids is they can do it, and they try it, and they learn how to do it, and that's what it's all about, is building that confidence. And so the program's going really well after being dormant for a while. Outside of emergency response, community outreach is the absolute core of what we do and what we are about, and will always be prioritized while I'm the Fire Chief. The fire department doesn't have any problem with being the life of the party. We could roll up just about anywhere, open our doors, pull out a fire hose, and we would spark a gathering. And that's important to us. Our traditional events of block parties, Fridays with Firefighters, and educational programs like CPR continue to be hugely successful with reaching a lot of our community. But one of my goals moving forward is to do a better job of reaching people that don't know about block parties, or that, or the kids that don't have access or the ability to come up to a Fridays with Firefighters at Friday at 10:00 AM. This summer, we'll be taking our Fridays with Firefighters show on the road. We'll still have our three committed events at the fire station that we have throughout the summer, but we'll have three additional dates where we'll be focusing some outreach in the community, partnering with the police department, and bringing the Fridays with Firefighters experience to them. So that concludes my piece, and I think I turn it over to Admin.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Rebecca Olson, I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I oversee the Administration Department. The Administration Department is relatively unique in that we serve as a resource for a lot of these things for our various departments. Some of what you will hear under our department is probably just echoing what's also happening in other departments. I won't read everything like everybody else unless you really, really want me to, but I will highlight a few things on each slide. So for example, Envision Roseville, as we all know, is our community visioning process, and we've really put a strong emphasis on inclusionary engagement and outreach with this process, making sure that we're hearing voices from people that are typically either under-engaged or underrepresented. And the reason being is that this is our community vision, this is what we want our community to be, and we want to hear from everybody in the community. And that will eventually lead to strategic planning and decision-making. So we want to make sure that we are reaching everybody that is part of this community. With that, our, where it says IAP2, that is the training that staff underwent, it's the International Association for Public Participation, and our community relations team is heavily focused on this and making sure that when we are communicating with our community, when we are engaging, when we're doing outreach, when we're even, you know, doing flyers, that we're understanding what the purpose is and really using the techniques that we've understood and learned about through that. We are leveraging a lot of our different communication channels to promote our proclamations and working collaboratively with the Human Rights Engagement and Inclusion Commission, which you'll hear from after this, really to promote and coordinate our outreach efforts. You've noticed that we've had some of our display cases that have highlighted some of our proclamations, and a lot of what we're doing in administration is raising the visibility of people that haven't typically been visible. In addition, we, as you've heard previously, there's a strong emphasis on increasing access to translation services. There are some really interesting, unique ways that we can provide access to people who may not have English as their first language or may have limited English proficiency. And so we're working actively on providing those resources so that all the members of our community can participate. Our website is in, being, currently in progress of being updated. There are a lot of accessibility issues, a lot of accessibility things that we need to improve, and so we're working on some of that right now. Looking internally, this is less of the stuff that is visible, that a lot of our community will see, but is nonetheless very important. You received our first annual workforce report, and that's really, provides the insight into our hiring practices and our applicant demographics, and it's going to allow us to kind of monitor and evaluate our hiring practices moving forward. As such, we have implemented several new systems and processes to collect data, so that we're using data to improve and using data to identify any barriers and mitigate those barriers for applicants that may want to serve the city of Roseville. Again, as I mentioned, we're really looking to raise the visibility of people so that they understand that they can participate in things. So for example, with our volunteer recruitment, we're making sure that we are able to and actively trying to make accommodations for people who may not be fully able or for other inclusionary reasons. We also have a volunteer spotlight, and there's a focus on diversity there because we believe in celebrating that diversity and the unique contributions of all of our volunteers. So we're highlighting the stories, excuse me, and experiences of our volunteers and showcasing that throughout our volunteer community with the hope that, you know, you can see the people that look like you volunteering, you can see the people that look like you serving you. And so hopefully that raising of visibility will help with our diversity efforts. Internally, we have a continued focus on learning and development. We've got several trainings that have already occurred and will be occurring for our leadership as well as all the other employees throughout our organization. I won't highlight all of that, there's a lot there that you can see, but then looking down further under administration, we've been talking with the council on our commission interview process and reviewing that process to ensure that it aligns with the equity principles that the council has identified. You've also probably seen a lot of the racial equity impact summaries that have been on the staff reports, called the Request for Council Action. We developed the guidelines and training materials for our staff, we're incorporating that into all of the council action items since January. And that is really, it ensures that the potential equity impacts of any proposed actions are considered and addressed during the decision-making process. In addition, we have been gathering the preferred language for massage therapists so that we can identify and better serve our customers, and using that for opportunities to use some of those translation services. And we have updated our Equity Dashboard, which provides a visual representation of our progress and key metrics associated with our equity initiatives. That dashboard allows us to track our achievements, identify areas for improvement, and then just ensure accountability. just ensure accountability for our equity efforts. And then we continue to make progress on the city's Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan. A lot of that has been brought forward to Council, so I won't dive too deep into that. Speaking of the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan, those three areas, we are looking to implement SMART goals for our workforce diversity coming up, so that we have a clear roadmap to achieve our diversity and inclusion objectives. We're tracking and measuring data related to commissioners and applicants over time, and will continue to make changes based on that equity analysis, feedback from stakeholders, and adapt our approach based on council priorities. And then, as I mentioned before, our racial equity toolkit, that is a little bit different than our Racial Equity Impact Summary. Our toolkit is something that can be used for a variety of different policies for outreach. It talks about identifying stakeholders, it talks about how to engage them and how to bring that into the recommendation. So, I believe Pat is going to cover this part.
So the last one I'll cover is the Finance Department. Finance Director Petrick is out of town at a conference, so I'll just step in here. As you know, the Finance Department serves a lot of back-office functions, pays our bills, and performs a lot of internal services, but it does have, under its operations, one of the most forward-facing interactions with the public is their license center, both for motor vehicles and passports. So we do have a lot of people coming through that on a regular basis that come from a variety of backgrounds. So, beyond trying to have as diverse of a staff as possible and having non-English speakers as our employees, we do provide some translations by appointment if we know somebody's coming in to use the language line to help go through all that. We also look to continue to make improvements for ADA, especially with our counterheaths, and making sure that people can come in and have a seamless transaction. And once again, we work with people, if they do call ahead, to really make sure that it's the best visit for them possible, with there's a photo that needs to be taken and other things that need to be filled out. And I would also just say, generally, once again, they're a support department, but they do provide grant fund management for all the different things that we do. All the grants, I listed a couple of them there, the ARPA funds, opioid settlements, CDBG/LCDAs grants, EDA loan programs, as I referenced before, to make sure there's proper financial management over those, so those funds can be used the way they're supposed to be doing. So, once again, a support staff, maybe not very visible, but something that's very important to the organization. So with that, I think that is the conclusion of our presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. I know Council's familiar with a lot of these, but it's a good time to pause and reflect a little bit and see where we are right now and where we're going.
Right, thank you. Thank you to all the department heads that participated, as well as Mr. Trezor and Ms. Olson. Just an observation, I'm glad that I heard during the presentation that we're looking at things like people who are hearing impaired, vision impaired, and other ability challenges, because I think that's important, and that's often something that gets overlooked in terms of how we serve people. And so as we look at providing information in our parks, especially educational materials to make sure that that's available for people that have varying levels of ability and things like that, that just came to mind as the presentations were going on, so I just wanted to highlight that, and I'll certainly open it up to other councilors for questions or feedback. Councilmember Broughton.
I just have positive feedback. First of all, thank you for all of this work. I feel amazing about the work you've done and the continued work that I know that we will do, but a lot of you are setting examples for the rest of the state and the region in the work you're doing, and I'm very proud to be part of that in some way, you're doing the daily work, so thank you for that.
Right, Councilmember McGrath.
And I think I'm going to echo Matt Johnson's statement, a lot of this is in the details, and it's the little things that make all of the difference, like the counterheight in the licensing center or some little tweaking of the playground equipment to make it inclusive for somebody. So, just really great work, I'm very proud.
And Councilmember Strong.
Thank you. I know when I sat office three years ago, I had no idea all these things were happening, and I feel like it's a landslide even since that time. We've moved so far, and it's really exciting, and it's an honor to represent all this work. So it's really nice to say, well, you wouldn't believe what we have, as if I had, you know, something more to do with it than this. And I just wanted to echo, in the disability community, the phrase is "nothing for us without us," and I really appreciate how many of our items across the departments have knowingly or unknowingly taken that into consideration and made sure that the people who are deeply impacted are part of the process of making decisions, and so I really thank you for that.
Anything else from councilmembers? Well, thanks again for all the work that everybody in the organization is doing in these areas. You know, I hear from people in the community about what's already being seen that's being done, including suggestions about what we could be doing more and doing better, and so that's always something that's important for all of us to take into account, and we continue to grow and improve what we're doing. And I want to echo the thanks that were reflected by staff earlier for Mr. Brooks, who's on the screen with us here, because I think that his ability to be resourced throughout the organization has helped everybody be better at this work as well, and it's something that means that, you know, we can do it in a coordinated effort, and it's, you know, from top to bottom in the organization, something that we're all working together on, and we have the support and resources to make a difference. And so, we appreciate everybody's work, including Thomas's. And just to note that we hope Thomas feels better, I know he was unable to be with us in person, so thanks for joining us this evening. And I don't know, since you've come on screen, if there's anything else you wanted to add in conclusion here this evening?
No, you know, thank you for allowing me to do this from home. I wasn't even sure that I'd be able to speak today, so I've already made progress just today. So, I did just want to thank the department heads for all of the work that they've done, as you saw in the presentation and all. It's a lot of work to coordinate this, this is an extra meeting on their calendar as well, but it was really important that we be able to speak to the work that they're doing day in and day out. And it's also important to kind of take a step back and reflect on, you know, all of what we've accomplished and what's still to come. So, with that said, thank you all for the support, and we'll continue pushing forward.
Great, thank you. And I just want to make sure that we make this information available to the public on our website, et cetera, so that this is a lot of good data and information for people. Likewise, with obviously with our Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan updates that we get with a lot of data in those, it's great, great material, and we want to make sure that it's accessible, speaking of accessibility, that's accessible to our community. So, thanks again for all the work. With that, I think we'll take a short break here to configure for our joint meeting with the Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission, so we'll take about just a couple-minute We're back from a short break here, wanted to give, since we've got such a great representation for everybody on our Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission, wanted to give us all time to get settled at the table and gather our thoughts here. This is our first joint meeting of the year with the Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission, hopefully first of others to come, depending on what we've got to talk about or what you've got to talk about with us. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chair Laura Palmquist for introductions and to kind of take it away from here.
Sounds great, thank you Mayor and Council.
And we do have Mr. Brooks, who is your staff liaison here, as a resource as well.
Thank you for having us. Laura Palmquist, Chair of the Commission, HRIC Commission. I'll just start with Amanda Moudu, quick intros.
I'm Amanda Becker, and I'm up here with everybody on the Commission.
I'm Rich James, I'm the Vice Chair.
Kathy McComber.
Dave Tidball.
And I am Gina Gurungwamha.
William Hill.
Super exciting, have a full table.
Mr. Frank, he had been here.
Frank, yes, Commissioner Frank was here and had to step up, so, yeah. Awesome. So we'll talk a little bit about what we did last year and what we're looking to do, and as commissioners, work on different things, I'll have them speak up on what projects they're tackling, looking forward. So starting with the essay contest, it was exciting to see Megan and hear her poem. Reading it is one thing, but hearing it from the person who wrote is a whole other experience, so thank you, Council, for allowing that, allowing her to come forward and meet that, that was very exciting. Rosefest parade last year, so we're lucky to get two spots, one for the Commission and one to invite another group, organization within the community, so we have up to 50, we can have up to 50 people in the parade with us. And last year, Amanda Becker reached out to an organization, set the whole thing up, so I'll let her kind of touch on what that looked like last year.
Yes, you're right, I had this urge.
I want to be a star.
Thank you for pointing it out there.
She was reaching, you were looking down.
Jeez, what is that? Last year, my two partners that were on the subcommittee with me are no longer on the Commission, but, so, it was a great experience for me. I volunteered to do the initial outreach, we reached out to the American Indian community because we really wanted to connect with them, and we did then ultimately end up working with Dillon Smith and the Roseville School. We got a decent turnout of the American Indian Committee, but also Rich and Kathy and myself walked. I think last year I wasn't really aware of, like, the outreach necessary, a lot sooner would have been helpful, it's kind of a get-up-and-go, so. Also, on the end of Commissions, reaching out to the other commissioners as well, so we did do that a little sooner this year, and we'll be following up again with the other Commissions to make sure we have good representation. And of course, we're trying to figure out how to represent ourselves well in that kind of an opportunity. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to secure a partner other than the commissioners. We did reach out to the Coran organization, Thomas helped with some additional outreach, and we just weren't able to make that connection. Followed up with another organization, Seeds of Hope, thinking we might have a nice, excuse me, opportunity to invite some of the immigrant population to walk with us, and still haven't had any communication back. Gina has joined my subcommittee since recently joining the, and so her and I are still trying to kind of continue outreach efforts because, why not? It's part of our, part of our mission anyway, so that's kind of where we're at, where we're going to continue to rally and do outreach and at least have hopefully a good commission outreach, or, excuse me, commission representation, and hopefully something creative during the parade. And we'll continue to learn the lessons of preparing for next year, next year's Rosefest.
Wonderful. So for proclamation support, it seems like each year we're reevaluating how to do them well. We have so many that we want to work on and bring to the community. So, when I first started, it was all the commissioners were handed one or two, you work on it, and display cases hopefully. Now we're lucky to have two volunteers who do this, display cases with us, with the city staff as well. And we narrowed it down to just doing three or four proclamations a year alongside the city communications team, so that way we can really promote them well, put the effort in, the research, and we're excited to move forward with that setup, making sure that we're rotating proclamations each year. So it won't be the same three or four, there'll just be a running roster, so we don't miss anyone. We want to make sure that everything is presented to the community. And community outreach, also another thing that's just ongoing in different capacity, when I started in COVID, we weren't out in the community. Now we can be out in the community, doing events, being in the schools, and we're learning what works well and trying to meet the community members out there versus expecting them to come here and talk to us at our meetings. Open invitation to everyone we meet, but we know sometimes sitting through a two-hour meeting on a Wednesday night is not ideal, so we want to bring what we do to them and help them and make sure they're aware of the community resources that the department has all put together like they presented. Looking forward to the 2324 work plan, we are working on a brand, that's something that Commissioner Becker's been very passionate about, and Commissioner Pagey as well, so kind of settled on some, a few words to help us with what we're going to work on next year. That is to affirm, amplify, and celebrate. So, that's where we're starting, and rebranding and making sure that HRIC is actually doing all the pieces of our commission, like, we are human rights, we are engagement, we are inclusion. So with that lens in mind, we'll start with the essay contests, and Rich, we'll talk about that.
Just as a little bit of history, my first experience with the Commission was at the beginning, well, it started in the summer, right before COVID hit, and we had the essays contests was out there, we had about 125 submissions that we evaluated, we had rubric we went through, we came back to the total commission and came up with who we thought were the, who, that was our plan to come back and do that. COVID hit, and it was, what are we going to do? How are we going to do this? And I know that Ms. Olson helped us a lot in getting that all figured out, and there was some, I believe some awards that were made and some students that were recognized as being the winners of the particular groups. We struggled a bit trying to figure out what we would do the next year when COVID was in full swing, and we came up with trying to do this, expanding it to a visual aspect too, not just a written, recognizing that writing is not everyone's forte. And we got something out, and we got some progress made, and we ended up with two submissions that year. This year, we were a little ahead of the program, we met with Dr. Lake to coordinate more, and she was very helpful with Pride, providing resources and information to us, and getting the information out to the principals and whatever. and whatever, teachers and students, and we got one submission this year. So looking at the trajectory, we don't want to go and have no submissions next year. What we would propose to you is that we maintain the essay subgroup and the whole Commission obviously working on it too. And we would like to investigate with teachers, students, principals, whatever, what's going to work so that it's worth our time to do it. Between all of us, we put in probably over 100-person hours doing this, probably, probably twice that, but at least 100 hours. And personally, I don't resent or say like I, it was a waste of time doing it, it wasn't a waste of time, but when you look at maybe those 100 hours, it would have been better spent doing something else. So what, again, we are proposing for you to get approval for is to evaluate, go to the sources of who are looking to try to engage, see what works, see what kind of, maybe it's the, the prize that needs to be changed, maybe the whole format needs to be changed, and do an investigation this year, and then be able to come back to you next year and say, this is what we found, this is what we think will work, and let's go with that and see how that goes. And so we're not, we don't want to abandon the whole idea because we think that's, is an important way of engaging middle school students and hopefully, hopefully helping them to move forward and thinking about being a part of the city and recognize that they are important and that they have something to contribute to us too. So that's, that's what we're proposing essentially for the essay part of the, our projects for next year.
If you want to pause there for some feedback.
Yeah.
I would just say, I think that's something that we talked a little bit about in our last joint meeting as well, and I think it makes a lot of sense. A, it kind of gives the committee, Commission, experience in designing an engagement effort and then actually going through it. And I think that, that, you know, you'll be able to identify stakeholders and work with them, and you've already done some of that, obviously, sort of ad hoc to get to the point, you know, where we're at. But I think a good sort of organized, planned, intentional effort along those lines, while it will hopefully also lead to a great program and something that's beneficial to the participants as well as to the community, but also, you know, it will be a good educational experience for everybody involved in terms of how we do engagement and what works and what doesn't work. So I think that's a, it's a great idea, and I'm supportive, and I will look to my other council members for thoughts, feedback, or questions for the Commission in that area. Councilman Braden.
Living in the world of working with young people and watching people not apply to be student members of Commissions and speaking with police chief about people being involved in new things or not, and I think it's a tough time to ask people for more, and I think that's part of what you ran into in the last few years, right? People are trying to keep their head above water and not do an extra essay or an extra art project, things that, so I think this is a fantastic idea to stop and pause and engage the folks who might be involved in this in the future. I think you might consider approaching a school, a couple of teachers, a single department or whatever, and see what you might come from there rather than trying, trying to identify five schools or organizations and, right, and see, see if you can restart seeds somewhere rather than try to find a whole new, whole new farm field of stuff.
Councilman Murray Strong.
I just, I think it's a great idea to take a pause. I kind of feel like we might come back and it would be a TikTok contest, but you never know. If it's middle school. I don't know if it's something late elementary, could be something that we considered or they have been included in the past, but it might be a little bit more bandwidth in the fourth through sixth grade, kind of, they're very passionate, you can't underestimate that, how concerned they are about the good of the world, and they still are pretty utopic that, that some of the big dreams they have are possible. So I would think that would be great, but I agree that maybe one school, finding one principal who you could really connect with, because they've had a lot of changes in principals in the last couple of years within Roseville and find a way. But I feel like looking out at this table, like there's some really great folks, educators, and people who are really community engaged, so I feel like I'm excited to see what you guys could come up with and, I mean, yeah, I think it's best to adapt and to what kids, even two or three years ago, what kids found interesting or willing to sign up for, and then if there was some way that they saw maybe, I don't know, an open mic or something about it, it wasn't just an extra thing, but it somehow celebrated their gifts and talents.
And Councilman McGrath.
Yeah, I concur. I think it's a great idea to pause. You all know that I've worked in this field for decades, and it was very different when, back in the 90s when we were doing this, because it was a statewide contest and there, things have changed, so we need to change too. And I think you're on the right track with what you're doing as far as collecting information. I think brilliant to talk to Dr. Lake about it, but yeah, get down to the, the principles. And I remember when we were doing it, it was usually someone who was teaching civics or something in that part of the education system that were the ones that really keyed into this, and then they promoted in their class and gave extra credit or something for it. I don't know that that'll work again, obviously. I think you need to look and see, maybe it will be TikTok, I don't, maybe it'll be open mic, but I have full confidence that I'll, you'll find, find the right path, so I'm looking forward to it.
And that's a good point. I think that the educators are oftentimes the best ally in it because they're the ones either that make it mandatory, which really helps, or, you know, can, can talk about what works and maybe how it fits into what they're planning to cover in their curriculum or whatever it might be, because I think that the more it can be a part of a whole rather than sort of this thing over here, it's probably better even to get participation and enthusiasm from folks. So I, I think that it's a great idea and, you know, I think we're all supportive of that approach to it, so.
So is our idea really to go to the source rather than us say, this is what's going to work? You know, to go to the people who actually are going to help us to do this and say, this hasn't worked. What are your ideas? What do you think we can? Then we can hopefully have more, a lot of feedback and then go with that feedback with saying, this is, this is something that we can handle too, because we have to consider our limitations in dealing with time and resources to make this work.
And just a point in terms of if it becomes something that's multimedia or something like that, we certainly have a great partner in Nine North, and as well, the Roseville Schools has an excellent video production, education effort that they have that sort of, you know, in tandem with, with Nine North, so there are opportunities if that's a direction it goes in. I guess I'm saying it not specifically to plug them, but just that there are resources that are available, depending on which direction it goes, that we can try to connect with as well to help make it a worthwhile effort.
Sorry to interrupt you, but in one of those COVID years, I had spoken to Nine North's Program Director, and we had something, I guess it probably was at the beginning of it, we had a thing set up, but we'll do this and we'll bring students in and have them talk about this and read their essays or whatever it was that they did, talk about the artwork that they did. And so we had, and they were willing to cooperate, they were very helpful and had a lot of good suggestions, so I, you know, I would anticipate something like that too, you know, as, as for us moving forward to tap into.
For sure.
So proclamations, I touched a little bit on the process that we decided on, working with city staff, but Commissioner Tippel also wrote out a new platform.
Format.
Yeah, format, thank you, for the proclamations, as we are talking about making sure that we're meeting people where they're at, when you're constantly reading the whereas, and that's what's in bold, and like there's reason for it, and we're like seeing it through that lens of this is how it's done, this is why it's how it's done, but also how do we make sure that every person could read it and appreciate it in the way that those of us who like, even though we're passionate about the whereas, we get lost in it. It's hard. So there was work put into the format of what we have been doing, and so you, you'll see that the whereas is still there, but there's also a look to the future. What can we do now to help? Like what are we actually going to do? What's the action item behind? So Commissioner Tippel, if you want to talk about that at all.
Well, anytime you're new at something, you risk doing something totally inappropriate, which apparently was what happened. Because we had this on our agenda, and it looked like there was like no turnaround time on it at all. And I looked at the text and I thought, well, there's a whole lot of really good stuff in here, but every time I read whereas and all of the facts and figures get jumbled up together and I get halfway through and I think this isn't worth reading the rest of this, which is too bad because it was worth reading and I did read through the whole thing. But, so what I tried to do is reimagine an opening that says, well, why are we doing this in the first place? Just a short thing that says, why are we doing, because you could have proclamations about, I mean, you look at calendars of proclamations, and there are proclamations on all sorts of things, you know, so why should we do this one, you know? And then some background about what's been our history in this area, some information about what we feel like is important right now that we want to move on and be a part of. And then I thought it might be good to close not just with, the city of Roseville is making this proclamation, but encourage the people who are reading it during the month of June, be involved, there's all sorts of stuff going on during Pride Month that people can just participate in and learn something about. And so why not put something at the end that invites residents of Roseville to participate as well? So almost all of the whereas stuff is still in what I did. I just added the part at the beginning about, well, why is this important? Why should you bother to read this? And then at the end, maybe you should be involved along with the formal city too. And so it doesn't look like a list of whereas things, it's several bullet points in each one of those categories. And honestly, I wasn't intending to make a new format, it really was, well, we've only got a few days, you know, and there's so much good stuff in here, but I can't get past the form it's in to try to make it as meaningful as I'd like.
So what'd you do wrong?
But.
What'd you do wrong?
Well, at least for this one, it didn't matter at all, you know, that's what I'm saying, you know? But we, I guess what Laura is saying is that maybe we'll try to figure out something that can be a fairly uniform format, but that is a little bit more user-friendly than the formal one, if you folks think that'll work, you know?
I think that sounds good. As the person who often reads these.
I thought we were going to lose him for a little while.
Sometimes they can be a challenge. It's not even the whereas's, but sometimes it is, it is, you know, you're trying, you're trying to read it in a way that's meaningful for the audience.
Right.
And you get lost in the facts and figures as the reader, so, you know, I certainly don't want to be critical of our proclamations. I think that we've, and, and your predecessors on the HRIC did a lot of work to get us to where we're at, and I, and we value that, and it's been a great effort and something we just want to continue. I think I also want to continue to kind of keep them fresh and relevant for people, and so I think that's, I think you're definitely on the right track, speaking as the person who sits and reads them up here. Councilmember Strong.
Yes, and I asked City Manager Trudgen this before the meeting, if there was going to be a proclamation for Juneteenth, and he said there hadn't traditionally, but I think this, especially given our, our person who came earlier, I think it's really important, this is someone who's super engaged in the community and educating people why and what it means and why it's important, and we have an event, so there's your action item. Like they can take, they can turn around, now, of course, it would be really hard to get this done and in time and in place and time to do it, but if it were to be possible, seeing it's how kind of a new holiday in the world of white people, sorry, but as far as the consciousness of others, like it's definitely not a new concept, but it's just this year that it will be a city holiday. So it's really, we're, we're moving our meeting, so it seems like it'd be really important to share why we did that. Like why is it important enough of an event to, the one time we have a meeting on Tuesday? I mean, to really tell people because, and then if we can do it in advance, it would be an opportunity to invite people to engage at the event itself. Yeah, I just think it'd be really helpful, and I really love when there are actions. I'm not as committed and convicted on that as a prior council member was, but I do feel like if there is that action that you commit to, that if it's something that's happening within the community, it would really, it's very, especially powerful.
Councilmember McGraw.
I read through the sample you had in here, and I just thought, oh, I hope we're going to read this tonight, but then I realized, oh no, that's just the suggestion, because it's happening after we read it. And a couple of things I really, really liked, and it was one of the, one of them was for protection of Roseville residents from bullying harassment. I thought that was really well said, and then of course, the action item really appealed to me. That's what we're here for, obviously. We want to, we want to draw attention to these things, but we need to do things about them, we need to have actions, as Gina said, she's a person of action when we talk to you, and I know all of you are that way too, so, well done.
Could you have David, you got homework for the next year?
Yeah.
That's what happens when you're new. Do you feel all that weight come onto yourself? But luckily you've got a team.
One other thing that we are, we had a discussion or a meeting last week about the display cases, and we intend to work with the volunteers to come up with ideas, suggestions, so that it's not just them, but we are assuming some of that responsibility to help make that a reality too, and something that makes sense and something that's doable for us and for them both, so it's not every month spending hours trying to get this together and then figure, and now we're going to do next month, so we're going to be working with that too in our, in this next year.
Good.
And one more thing, I think we're going to focus on a little bit more in the coming year on the proclamations, is inviting those communities that are addressed in the proclamation to scan them in advance for suggestions or improvements if we aren't, things we might not be aware of.
Very good point.
Rosefest, we also talked about a little bit already, that reached out, Commissioner Becker reached out to a few organizations, did not quite get the response back that we were hoping for, but we are going to go to other Commission meetings, invite them. We sent an initial invite out, Emily Parks and Rec will be joining us, but we want to formally invite other commissioners to walk with us and promote commissioner recruitment as we know that's ongoing, and the things that you can do as a Roseville community member to better the city. But anything else on Rosefest?
No, I just think it, we're trying to think of it as an opportunity to promote Commission recruitment and especially youth recruitment, and there were a lot of younger people at the parade last year, I mean, watching the parade, and so trying to think of how we can provide some materials or something fun to sort of let the younger community know there's opportunity there. We haven't lost track of that sort of initiative or objective as well, so.
Even though the work you do is very fun, it is sometimes hard to convince somebody on the outside of that, that it is, that it isn't.
Yes.
Understand the challenge. Councilmember Strong.
I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but if you have two spots, two units of space for people and you don't have another unit, I don't know if it'd be appropriate for you to invite your children and family, spouse, whatever, to come with you because you are one person in the community, but somebody might not realize that you're Scarlett's dad, you know? Like they might know, I think it just, it puts you in the community and makes people realize more who you're connected, I'm still Maggie and Kathleen's mom, you know? Years later, they don't even live in Roseville anymore, but, you know, people know who I am because of that connection, and it ties us more together, so I don't know if that space would be appropriate to use that way, but it certainly seems like it would, if you have it, you could use it in that manner.
It's a great idea. It's a great visual of community too, to show that we're not just us here, we have extended community. just us here. We have extended community and then.
Well, and I think of the reminder that you live here. Like, you, you part of this community. You can't be on this. It's not like you get paid as an employee to show up and you're, you leave when you're done. You live here. Sorry, well, I saw you worry about getting paid.
Now that you mention it.
What?
Is it worth mentioning something that we don't know whether or not it will happen?
Yes, and I'm so sorry. David's been jumped, has jumped on it, too, and is helping us. It's outreach.
When, when we weren't able to find other partners and we were looking for something that might be eye-catching, interesting, and that might actually help with the youth engagement thing. My grandson is a senior at Roseville High School and in the jazz music program there. And I'm very impressed with the work that they do and have played myself in a small traditional jazz group. And it's fun to get one of those flatbed tow trucks and ride in a parade playing jazz like that. So I reached out to Mr. McKnight at the high school to see whether or not we could work out something with one of their small groups to be in one of our spots in the parade. And that's in process at this time. He is actually not going to be in town on that day, but he said he would reach out to some of the students and some of the groups and see if any of them were interested. So we don't know what'll happen with that. But it would be kind of a cool thing, both from, from the youth standpoint, from the standpoint that Roseville High School doesn't have a marching program and therefore hasn't really had a presence in the Rose Fest Parade. But it'd be kind of neat if they did have some presence that way. So I don't know if that'll happen anyway, because I haven't heard back yet.
Stay tuned for more, right?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Graff, I think you had.
Just, just to comment on the other commissions, I think it's really great to have a representation from other commissions with your group. Because I, people don't know how the commissions we have, and it's an educational component for the parade, for people that are watching. Even though we all know a lot of people that are watching the parade aren't from Roseville, but it's still something we're proud of having all of the input from residents like you and commission members. So I'm very supportive of that.
And, and I was going to add, not knowing about the outreach to the Roseville jazz folks, which I'm fully supportive of because the more jazz in the world, the better. But that's just the advice I have.
He didn't come to the concert after the last meeting.
Although I did watch it.
Oh.
But also, I was thinking about the Rice and Larpeter Alliance may have some synergy, too. They're a community group. They do a lot, you know, especially in that southeast Roseville area. And they have events to promote and things like that. So if that's another group you wanted to reach out to, I'm sure staff could get you connected as well. We don't want to overload you with possibilities, but anything, anything probably helps at this point, so.
Just one comment on that, because I know that when they're organizing the parade, you're going to need to let them know if you have a band there because they don't want them right next to each other.
Sure, sure. Just, just put them by the city council. That'll.
Yeah.
Councilmember Strong.
I think the band idea is a great idea. As a parent of three kids who are in jazz band and band, they were offended every year that, you know, why aren't we involved? So I think it would be a really great connection. The high schoolers are there. It's a parent-approved event that they can go to, that they're out at after dark, coming home if it goes late. And so I think it really does tie really nicely to the community. So if there was any way, my kids would come up with random ways that they were going to be a marching band that has never, ever marched before. And so, I mean, I think, and maybe reaching out to Mr. Denal or Mr. Churchich, who have been around a little bit longer and maybe have a little bit longer tenure and no kids, kind of like a whole spectrum of, they maybe would have other ideas.
Sure. So we need about six units in the parade, it sounds like.
That's just a 25.
Nothing wrong with that.
We've got less than a month.
We could, we could always not be in the parade, if we need to make room. All right.
So Rose Fest leads us really well, like nicely into community outreach, the things that we would like to do, the things we are doing. So we will be, most commissioners will be volunteering, helping with Juneteenth setup, teardown, just welcoming guests coming through. We'll most definitely be at Rose Fest, Rice and Larpeter. We've always had a table there and we'll continue doing that and other community events that happen throughout the summer and fall. And things we're trying to add into the outreach part is being in the high school consistently. So we have the essay contest, which now we're going to reevaluate. That was how we were in the middle school. How can we reach the RAS students? And we know that there are no youth commissioners on any of the commissions at the moment. And one of the things we're realizing is the limits on the youth commissioner position. We understand the reasons behind those limits, that they have to be a resident. But we are also losing out on a big voice within the community and looking to see how we can readjust and maybe change to non-voting. Or how else do we reach out to those students to get youth commissioners on the commissions? Because having none is a really, it's lacking. And then we're no longer amplifying or affirming or celebrating in that regard. And, you know, it's exciting to have jazz students. Well, what if there are students who are excited about Parks and Rec or human rights and inclusion that want to be on the commission but can't because they don't live here? So we're realizing that's a big piece that we're missing. But we are going to be in the schools, working with them, talking with them. And we'd like to ask council to just reconsider some of those, like, limitations that are on youth commissioners as we continue to recruit for all commissions.
Right.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I don't know. Are you asking for a recommendation?
Yeah.
I think I would be very supportive of allowing students who do not, who attend school within Roseville. So that doesn't include everyone in the Roseville area school district. If their school is within the boundaries of Roseville or they live in Roseville, because we often talk about, you know, that live, work, or play, that we can't get that wide. But if someone didn't live within the boundaries, if there was a great concern about representation, that they maybe be allowed to be on the commission without voting, I think that would be, to me, that seems like a reasonable compromise. But just yesterday, I was at a graduation open house of a young lady who lives in St. Paul, who had really hoped to be as youth commissioner. And that was what she shared with me. I haven't seen her since last fall. And she's like, I still am so disappointed that didn't work. So I think there are students, but we, we have to find a way to meet them somewhere. And so I think, you know, we allow, we decide to amend, to allow youth commissioners to be able to vote if they live within the city. And so that maybe then that's a combination is that they can be part of it. And they can still go to, on through schools if they live within Roseville. But I would be supportive of that as an compromise so that we, because we have all these spots. It's not like we have all of these students waiting in line that we're having to narrow that down. We really want to make the wide, widen the net of where we're seeking.
And other council thoughts, feedback? Anything else we need to be covering this evening that's on your agenda for us, or?
Can I just add one question? If we, how, how would we proceed to make this a formal request of you?
You would have a discussion probably as an agenda item at one of your meetings and then take a vote and make a recommendation on that basis.
Okay.
I guess the only observation I'd like to say is we're looking forward to, to the Envision Roseville results that will, I think, better inform our work and give us new opportunities, sort of.
Right.
And thank you to Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you, Thomas.
Anything else from?
Don't let him go.
Anything else from the council for this joint discussion? I did want to talk a little bit about, I guess I'm not going to wait for anybody else in the discussion.
I've got something to say.
But, but I think one of the things that's been talked about over the years and is the notion of trying to make sure that the commission is always aware of upcoming potential engagement opportunities well in advance of those.
Yes.
So that the commission can kind of weigh in on, you know, here's somebody you might want to talk to in the community. That would be a great way to connect with somebody that this, whatever it is, is important to or could be important to. And so I would definitely encourage the process, you know, and certainly the commissioners to be advocates and evangelists with their support folks for that and with the community for, you know, the city organization for that, to make sure that you're well aware ahead of city engagement efforts so that you have a chance to weigh in and be sure that, that if there's those ideas or those, those groups to connect with. Because I think that's, you know, likewise with our recruiting of commissioners, you know, what are some ways that, so this is a transition to a slightly different topic. What are some ways that you might think of as a commission and want to recommend to us that we could do a better job of connecting people throughout the community with what we do as a city, how it impacts their lives, and how they can be a part of that process, whether it's serving on a commission or whether it's participating in Envision Roseville or other engagement efforts? Because I think, you know, part of the challenge we always have is, you know, we get, we get such a small percentage of the people in our city knowing what we're doing, as was mentioned at a previous meeting. You know, most people don't know who the mayor is, which is, you know, it's just the way things are, because everybody's got lots to do in their lives, you know. But how can we help sort of from our, from the city organization point of view, make sure that we're doing, doing the best we can to get sort of what we do and how important we are to people in the community, out to people that we want to hear from about what we're doing? Because I, you know, I, I think, you know, like I said, there's, there's so many people that we traditionally well connect with through whatever the means are, that don't engage because they just, that's not something that's on their radar. But there's also people that may be really interested in something that never connect because they just don't know that that's something that we're involved in as a city. And so definitely, I think that's something that should always be kind of on the commission's radar and something to provide feedback, you know, to the organization, to us on the council, as to how we can, how we can better do that engagement. So knowing about things ahead of time, very important. And then just that notion of, of if there's things, you know, we've talked about things like Roseville U we used to do. We've had a request to kind of restart the open house right here, you know, on city campus to get people to come and learn about what we do. You know, maybe there's a way to do something out more in the community along similar lines or something like that, just kind of throwing out ideas. But anything that the commission thinks might be helpful for those efforts, I think it would be great to hear from you because you are our resource, hopefully, to get, do a better job in all those areas. So I want to encourage that. Councilmember Graff.
I'm going to follow up with something on there. It's, and you would not need to take this on as the sole providers of that whole project. Because if you're going to do something as large as one of those things, there's definitely.
Oh, yeah. It's about making recommendations to the city to do or not do something, not to do it as your own project.
We want to be clear on that because it can overwhelm, having been on this commission, you can become overwhelmed very quickly, Bill. Too many projects.
No, thank you for pointing that out. That's really what I meant, is to, is to, you know, give us ideas about things that we as an organization, and I mean we, inclusive of you as a commission, too, but certainly I don't want to suggest that it's all projects that the commission has to do, because that's not what we're, we don't want it. As Councilmember Graff said, we don't want to pile you on with too many things that, it's all you. You all have to do it. But it's really about, you know, you're a great source of ideas and creativity and energy that we want to take advantage of as an organization to do a better job of what we do. So definitely, if you've got those, you know, talk them through amongst yourselves. And if it, if it passes muster amongst you, bring it, bring it to us, either through your staff liaison or through the next joint discussion, or request a special joint discussion, or whatever it is. You know, don't be shy.
I'm not going to be shy.
We are.
What can I share right away?
Yeah, I don't have to worry about that.
My experience as a new commissioner is like, I wish I knew about this, like, at the end of the year, like September, October. So, so example, you said, I wish there was an open community, whatever, open house party or something to know the city. I wish I was there. So I'm trying to vision myself. And then, don't interview us in March, April, when there's so many events hitting us this month. And then they're saying, in two months, you need to do this in one month, right? I, I felt like, I was like, okay, I want to do it, but I want to do it the right way. And then I want to observe these people who are experienced first and then to be, right? But then as a do, I, I have so many things that I want to do it. And I don't want to again be zumbled and then want to again give up because I'm a mom, I'm a business owner, I am this, I am that. So I feel like it would be amazing if you had certain ones, like, hey, this is the month we do open house. By this time, we recruit people, have a list of people who wants to sign up. By February, background check before you sign us in and attend the meeting. I was like, background check, what if I was a criminal? I already attended a meeting, right? The right way. So that I go share my good experience to my people, saying, oh, my God, this is amazing. Right? But it's like, right now, I'm not there yet. Honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm learning.
Well, I think we hope to learn from all of you as well, for sure. Councilmember Graff.
So that if, yeah, if it was calmer, the day, somebody who recruited us said, hey, how is it going? There's no follow-up. It's like, what was that background check for? What was the size of my outfit for? There was no, it would, we are already, we are just 10 of us. It is okay to do that phone call and have the relationship is more important than just recruiting. Do you all know us? You have just met us for 10 minutes. And know our strengths and weaknesses and use that. Because we want to serve Roseville. I'm here for, like, bigger reason. I want to use my time, like, not just for meetings.
Uh, Councilmember Wright?
Thank you for that. And it does get easier, too.
I'm like so excited, but.
You don't want to lose that.
Yes, don't lose that. Don't miss it. And a couple of things, it'd save the world next week.
Yes.
All right. I, I don't disagree with what you said, Mayor, but a lot of what you said kind of brings back my memory of this S. rape thing that we have. And so we're always looking, how do we do that better? But a lot of that process is something we've kind of spent a ton of time, with staff time, with the HRAC, with others, kind of creating. The piece that former Commissioner and Chair Etienne Jevie brought up a few times, and we said yes, but hasn't happened, is what connections do we develop in the community that we can nurture over time? That we say, hey, this is a community leader. This is a person who has many different connections, that we have a relationship we've developed over time, that when there is something, we can say, hey, do you know people who would be more interested in this? Do you have, right? What we don't always have is that. We don't have a well to tap because we haven't tried that too much, right? So for me, I would rather be saying, hey, what relationship, where should we be finding those deeper relationships and nurturing them month after month, year after year, that are people who are connected into different parts of our community, who would be trusted by those others to say, hey, here's, yeah, here's this thing. The city of Roseville is going to be straightforward and honest and open and looking for real feedback or real participation. So for me, it's not just the process, because we can always improve a process, but we have a very robust process. We're starting to use more and more. So, but, but to what end if, you know, you send something out, people like, you send something out in a different language, like, I don't read that one either, you know, whatever. And many, many cultures might communicate better in person, right?
Yeah.
Or TikTok. And, and so, so that we are, are thinking about those connections and trying to nurture and develop those.
If I could also say, one of the things we made a big change on is we had on our work plan as community engagement. It's one of the items on our work plan and really felt like that's just built into our commission and not really a task to be done. And so we've changed some of our formatting when we meet in the agenda. It's just in the agenda built in that we talk about the connections we have made in the past month, the deeper personal relationships. I've started working with Corey and Ian from the communications team to do Voices of Roseville, where we do go out and we record audio interviews and we meet people. Because I think you said it earlier, it's the small things. And those build, even I had an opportunity to talk to Gina for 1,400 hours the other day. And those, those build the blocks, the foundation of the real community engagement. I felt so engaged in the Roseville community since I've been a part of this commission, with the council, with the racial equity initiatives, with the amount of work that's being done that is people-driven and heart, from the heart, is so invigorating. And so I was always like, how do we get more people here? And you have to meet them where they're at.
Yep.
That's the only answer to that. And then you can pull them for some reason that, but you've already. And then you can pull them for some reason that, but you've already met them where they're at. And so I think it's helpful to hear that support from you all, that we can have our outreach conversations and our, and then that can percolate and we can say, oh, we can go to the city council and ask for this initiative that an individual brought up, that's a beautiful idea. So I think we'll continue those efforts and I think it's helpful for us to hear that because, you know, we are active in our pursuit of, of outreach. It's, we do know it's work, it's getting, moving your feet into spaces, and we are committed to that, I think, as a group, so.
Well, it's definitely great to hear that that's, that how you incorporate that into your process, too, because I don't know that we're necessarily all aware of that, too. So I appreciate that information. It's helpful. Councilmember Strong.
Two things. One, of course, as soon as you think you know where the target is, the target is moved. Obviously, when you figure out where, how you're going to get people and then it changes. So essay contest as an example. So just, I think it's, it's nice, I think that's the beauty of having new faces and new excitement like Gina, to have new ideas that continue to grow and develop. But I think, yeah, it just keeps changing. The other piece I had, gone. It's gone. Oh, a couple of weeks ago, I had brought forward that I thought we as councils should be more engaged because we all are at events all the time, but a lot of people still don't know who we are, our, our names, or what we look like, or sometimes that's nice, but sometimes it would be helpful for people who maybe wouldn't send an email. I have people who send me texts all the time and say, I don't want anybody to know my name. They want to remain anonymous. And so they might walk up to us at a park and engage with us, but they don't want anything on the record. I don't know if they're in a witness protection or, but people have the reasons. And so I, we have talked about being more intentional about our engagement, too. And so I think if we look to you, if there's something you see that someone's brought forward and you've looked at, oh, look, this community, this community's doing, it's really working really well. We decided we'd start in small chunks so that this summer we would sign up for Discover Your Parks programs and often more than one of us is at an event, but that we take some time to table, so to speak, just to be present and be physically, and your council member, you know, this evening is, or your mayor this evening, you know, as present, to be more intentional about our presence. And I think it sounds like that's what you're doing as well, which is really helpful. So I think in that regard, it's, I think that open dialogue about what could happen. I know that we can't take on so many things, all of us have, you know, at least one day job, but, but making sure that our time spent is useful and productive and purposeful instead of just slipping into the back of something where nobody knows who you are and then you leave, you didn't, maybe you got information, but you, it wasn't as helpful as it could have been.
I'd like to respond to something that you mentioned, Mayor, that I think we are, we have started and then fits and starts of find, of having that list, those lists of people to go to, even if they're no longer the head of the organization, to say, we would like you to be involved in this. And I think that, isn't Elliot going to head?
Yep, Commissioner Frank put together a starter list for us.
Starter list to do that. So I think that there's going to be more focus on getting that in, in writing, instead of saying an aspiration, have something concrete to do as a beginning and then obviously that's something that would continue forever, you don't just stop it.
And I think it's important, a part of that is, is that, that it's a value proposition for the people we're putting on the list as well. You know, it's not just that we're trying to take advantage of that connection with people as an organization to get some benefit for what we do, it really needs to be important for them to be on the list as well. And so I think that's, that's a part of that, that communication and that establishing of relationships is that, you know, that, that there's a reason that we want you to be on that list and that we want to hear from you and, and be, have you be a part of our decision-making as a city. So definitely that's a part of it, but I'm glad, glad to know that that's, that's coming together as well. Great. Great. Councilmember Strong.
Just something we haven't talked about at all is, I don't know, as we talk about proclamations and such, and I'm not sure I have a strong opinion, but have we discussed like a land acknowledgement or anything else along those lines that is integral to our celebrations and other things? I know it definitely was part of our KIA Park consideration, but it's, I don't want it to be a one and done, so I'm thinking how that would be involved.
Yes, so Thomas could probably speak to it more, but we do have it on the agenda for Parks and Rec to join us next month to discuss a land acknowledgement. So that was brought to our attention last week.
Anything else that anybody has to cover here? I appreciate the time you spent with us this evening and definitely appreciate the time you spend not with us, because that's a lot more of your time. I, I think that's, it's great, it's been said, but I'll echo that, that having a full complement of commissioners is wonderful. We really love your energy and enthusiasm, too, and we want to make sure we don't do anything to ruin that, so please let us know if we are doing something to ruin it. And it doesn't have to be publicly, you, you can remain anonymous. But no, we, right.
Some of those emails to Julie.
I have a special email box.
But, but no, really do appreciate it and glad we had some time this evening for a good conversation, too. Sometimes these, these joint meetings can be 10 minutes long and it just, everybody walks up going, what did we talk about? So, so thank you again for that as well, and I'm glad we had the time on the agenda to do it. And you still have some time before the sun sets to get out and enjoy the rest of your evening. Assuming you don't want to stay for our consent.
Exciting stuff.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Great seeing you.
Bye, neighbor.
Because we have so little left on our agenda, I'm not going to suggest another break or transition. I think we're just going to jump right to the next item. And that is consideration of city council minutes. We've got one set of minutes from our April 24th meeting. And I did just want to note that I did in my suggested changes and corrections, note several things that were not just my voice. So I, I wanted to make sure that others, that I might have been changing, I wasn't changing what anybody meant to say, but hopefully doing a better job of clarifying what people were meaning to say. But definitely this is that chance, if, if that was the case, to correct it. And I know I specifically copied Councilmember Strong on one thing because it didn't seem like it was working properly, so, but I didn't want to put words in her mouth, so. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes of the April 24th city council meeting or is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Right, been moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Etten to approve the minutes as presented from the April 24th meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously four to zero and those minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We've got a number of items, so we'll allocate about two hours for Mr. Tregeon to review and highlight each of those. Go, Mr. Tregeon.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $2,551,288.76. Item 10B approves two temporary gambling permits, one for the United States Veterans Riding Club for a raffle at the Roseville BFW on June 10th, and the other for the Roseville BFW Auxiliary for a raffle on July 4th. Item 10C approves entering into a contract with WSB and Associates for engineering services for the 2023 pond maintenance project. Oh, yeah, and the second on one is to enter into a contract with escape fire protection to flush and inspect 430 private hydrants. Item 10D approves entering into professional services agreement with BRKW Appraisals to conduct appraisals as part of the County Road B reconstruction project in 2024. Item 10E approves a resolution granting Mindot a temporary permit to construct part of the work, to construct as part of their work, and Highway 36 is somewhere to cross one of our pathways as part of the Dale Street ramp improvements they're making for the Highway 36 project. Item 10F certifies unpaid utility and other charges to property tax rules. Item 10G approves a resolution awarding a contract to Pemper Companies for rehabilitation work at the Long Lake Sanitary Sewer Lift Station project. Item 10H approves adopting the Ramsey County, Ramsey County Comprehensive Emergency Operations Plan that will guide the county and the city during an emergency. Item 10I approves entering into a grant agreement with Mindot and Ramsey County as part of the Critical Quarters Grant Program to study pedestrian safety at the intersection of Snelling and County Road B. To go to a second page here on the consent agenda, so item J is, approves a minor amendment to Chapter 309 Massage Therapy Chapter after the council adopted the major revisions to Chapter 309 on April 24th. Our city attorney noted there are certain medical professions were not exempted properly in the ordinance that we did pass. This amendment does correct that oversight by listing the state statutes under which the various medical professions are licensed. Item 10K approves a memorandum of understanding between the city and LALS Local 436, which are police sergeants, regarding the payout of compensation time at the end of 2022 and moving forward. Item 10L approves an ESCOR agreement with Lexington Plaza LLC regarding the partial reconstruction on the south side of Roma Avenue adjacent to the property. This is the old Mexico site that will be a Spanish immersion school. Item 10M authorized entering into a sewer availability share agreement with Take Five Car Wash, I'm sorry, that's a charge agreement on Take Five Car Wash, further onsite water reclaim system that will reduce the amount of water used. The council did review this and is okay with charging less SAC credits as long as that water reclaim system's in operations and this contract allows for that mechanism to happen in case they do not operate that as planned. Here, they will be charged additional SAC fees. Then finally, item 10F rejects the bids for the South McCarran's retain wall project. The city only received one bid that was 32% higher than the engineers' estimate. Based on the high costs of the bid, the city is asking the council to reject the bid and look to rebid it in the fall of '23 for potential work in 2024. Staff and the design engineer will work to identify elements of the project that can be redesigned and/or eliminated to reduce the cost of the project. And that is the consent agenda.
Great, thank you, Mr. Tregeon. I just do want to note, I think there's a correction to the information on the first slide. Item C, the purchases over 10,000 is what included the pond maintenance, and item D was actually the contract for the, the appraisals. And so it's just listed as incorrectly on the item.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
On this slide, so just to clarify that.
Thank you.
But we have the materials and the information. Is there a motion related to the consent items?
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Strong to approve or accept those items. Discussion on the motion? And I would just note for folks at home, the Highway 36 project is scheduled for 2024, not 2023, so we'll have to put up with the pavement for another year. With that, we've got the motion before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously four to zero. Those items are approved or accepted. That finally brings us to the future agenda review. Mr. Tregeon.
Yep, I'll pull that up here. So this is our last meeting in May, and we have two meetings in June. Our next meeting is June 5th. We'll have another joint meeting, joint meeting with the Finance Commission. We have three abatements, property code abatements. As you know, oftentimes those fall off as we get closer, but as of now, they're scheduled for that. We have various runaway vacation public hearings that we thought maybe we're going to do tonight, but we moved to June 5th. Also discuss the city commission application process, and I do plan to bring back the 23, 24 city manager goals for your ratification. And then I would mention June 20th, and it was alluded to before, June 19th is a city and state holiday, so we can hold a council meeting on that evening, and so we previously scheduled that for Tuesday, June 20th. And as of now, we have a proclamation for ADA month as well as park and recreation. We want to start talking about any city council budget priorities and the legislative impact. Typically, that's a pretty quick conversation, legislative impact, it won't be this year. There are numerous things that are impacting our budget and as well as programs and delivery of services. We also have two, have two public hearings for liquor licenses, par 365. Don't know why that's popping up. I don't want to...
Five minutes. That'll keep them breathing. Good, good, I like it.
One for par 365, this is the indoor golf simulator that I remember folks came forward earlier, and then a public hearing for the new liquor license at Cedar Room Trinity Building, apparently called T.O.S., so.
Nice.
Really good news. And I do want to mention, I've been informing the council late last week and through the weekend, even this morning, about the legislature. So it does look like the Senate and House did pass a bonding bill without the Oval in it. It's disappointing, certainly. We'll continue to work with our delegation to make sure we get funding next year. We did, as, as I mentioned to you over the weekend, have the sales tax included in the final tax bill. That was a little bit of a surprise. It was told to us months ago that they were not going to do any sales tax requests, so that was passed. And so the next step, of course, would be to go to the electorate in 2024 for a vote and whether or not to institute a sales tax. We also had the hotel licensing bill pass that will allow us to properly, directly regulate hotels in our community, which is something we've been trying for quite a long time. I would also mention Sacred Community, legislation did pass, and that is something that is moving forward, will take effect January 1st. And as you know, we have a process in place to deal with the current situation, Prince of Peace, that will be coming forward in the next couple of months. I would also just mention adult-use cannabis, you saw that as well. Does not look like there will allow for retail sales for at least a year or so, so we have some time to get ready for that. There is an ability for the city to limit the amount but not prohibit it, and that's based on population. We will also be getting cities and counties 20% of this tax on cannabis, which is the 10% tax above the sales tax that will trickle back to the communities for help on enforcement. So a lot of details we don't know about, but that's kind of the broad strokes on that. Would also mention that if you recall, earlier this year, we did do a letter of support for Keystone, they did receive $2.6 million as a bonding bill, which was great. And I also saw on this, I was not tracking this, but a million dollars for the Rice Street Alliance for Reconstruction of Rice Street and pedestrian and traffic safety items. And so I don't know much beyond that, beyond what I saw in the, in the bonding bill, but it goes either to the city of Roseville, city of Maplewood, or Ramsey County or...
Ramsey County, yep. It's for, it's for the, the next phase of the study of the improvements north of Wheelock, is my understanding. So they did, they're actually doing the improvements or starting the improvements soon on south of Wheelock.
Yeah.
On Rice Street, but they didn't have a funding source to do the study, the community outreach and all that for north of Wheelock, which gets up to County Road B and Roseville. And so that is, I believe, what that funding is for.
Yeah, I took a peek, it's a less, the language looked like it was a little bit more expansive. It could go to any of the cities as well, but I'm sure it's for that, for that project, obviously.
Okay, well, that's, that's the genesis of it anyway. Who knows? Okay, that's good.
So, so as I mentioned, there's a lot of things on our legislative priority list that have certainly been ticked off, so we can move forward. We still have the bonding that we need to follow up with, and I think there's a lot of other regulations that are coming down that will have an impact on us. So we're trying to make sense of it, waiting for our partners at the League of Minnesota City and Metro Cities to start giving us some synopses of what happened on there, but it was a busy session.
Sure.
And I should just mention that the Roseville Business Council will have our legislative delegation of those that can make it this coming Wednesday to talk about the recently concluded session. As you know, in the past, they often are meeting up to that date and trying to get their sleep, but hopefully their journey today and be able to get some sleep will have some representation there Wednesday morning here in this chamber.
All right, thank you. I did want to clarify, in the hotel licensing, the legislation gives any city...
Any city, yes.
That the ability to do, it's not just special for Roseville.
Correct.
And then on the, the, you said limiting the amount on the, the adult-use cannabis, you meant the number of licenses in the city?
That's correct, yes.
That's what can be limited? Okay, got it.
Retail licenses, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand that more clearly. I, I was wondering if we had to put something in our code about how many ounces are available to be sold in Roseville? That's not what you were talking about?
No, 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 that's state level. I would mention for the THC side, I've heard, I've not seen the language, that they will now, now allow for THC products, edibles, to be sold by liquor stores. We currently have a limit of eight THC licenses. We have like nine licenses right now for liquor stores. We've already had one inquiry from a liquor store, so hold on, let the legislation pass and settle in. So we may need to take a look at the THC licensing, and not sure how that plays with the cannabis licensing as well. So that's, we'll need to do some work on that, but just to give you a heads up.
No, I think it makes sense probably to have that as a, like a work session, discussion topic over the next several months, as between now and when things go into force. There's your five minutes.
Yeah, I spoke to one.
All right.
I could just turn it off.
Any other communications from councilmembers, announcements, future agenda items to be Any other communications from councilmembers, announcements, future agenda items to be I would just follow up on an action the city council took about a month ago to proclaim Poppy Days in Roseville for the sale of the Buddy Poppies. I can confirm that the veterans were at Cub Foods distributing Poppies this past weekend